Got it. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We appreciate your attendance. We'd like to start the meeting, Town Council Meeting, six o'clock. It's actually 6:02, but that's close enough. Mrs. Ametrono, if I could ask for a roll call, please.
Glenn Shibley.
I'm present.
Gregory Bosnier.
Here.
Kerry McGee.
Here.
Deb Bacon.
Here.
Nick Gorham.
Here.
Ed Wazika.
Here.
Sounds good. Okay, and do we... Flag's right behind us. Well, it's low places. Pledge allegiance, if you would be so kind. I like this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I guess we have the invocation, if you could remain standing, please. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessings tonight, as we do every night. We ask for your guidance and safety over our service individuals, officers, men and women in this country and across the world. As we begin to approach Veterans Day, all our family members that served in all the different wars, the Great War, 100-year memory this year of the Armistice Day, and we ask also for your blessings on health and happiness. Amen. And emergency evacuation plan? I think it's... Look for the exit doors. There's four here. And feet don't feel me now. Hopefully, we won't need it tonight. So we're through A, and we're on to B, which is resolution...
Joe Farside. I'm counsel to the town.
Ed Summerlee, GZA, Geo-Environmentalal. I have a geologist and engineer working for the town through the potentially responsible party group.
Nicole Maraski, GZA, project manager for the landfill closure project.
Hey, ma'am.
And available for any questions that people might have?
Sure. Happy to. I appear to be one of the lucky... The only lucky person with a mic that works. Maybe that's a bit of a curse. Thank you for convening this tonight. As you know, the landfill has been a long process to bring in material to eventually cap the landfill in a way that's compliant with Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management requirements. We have come before the council a number of times over the past few years to give updates on the progress of the landfill. The last time we came before the council was about a year and a month ago, so 13 months, I think, September of 2017. And at that time, we just gave a simple status update. And at the time, I believe we reported to the council then that the landfill had gained momentum in terms of the material that we were able to accept, that we were having more frequent deliveries. And I think at the time, we were in the range of 35% to 40% complete in terms of inbound material that was needed. Since that time, we've had a very productive year at the landfill. We have more quickly than anticipated taken in the material that was permitted by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. And to the extent where, within the next week or so, we are going to take in so much material that we will hit our limit of material that can be taken in under the existing approval. Once that happens, the work at the site would essentially come to a pause because the next step would be construction and installation of an impermeable cap, and that can't happen until the 2019 construction season. So figure, if you will, late spring or early summer would be the earliest we could install that cap. The material that we've brought into the site over the last year and over the prior years has resulted in the receipt of a lot of revenue for that material. So parties that are bringing the material to the landfill are also paying to do so. The money that they pay goes to the PRP Joint Defense Group, which is continuing the landfill operation and in charge, under the consent decree filed in federal court, to complete the remediation activities. So the town has a 60% share within that PRP group, the group of parties who are doing the remediation. So by the end of the remedial action, the group will have taken in over $8 million, and that money will be allocated to, and has been allocated to, paying for the contractor and the engineering costs associated with doing the work. We have an opportunity here over the next two to four months to, instead of allowing the site to sit idle, to take in some additional material consistent with the material we've been taking in over the last year. And DEM has signaled its preliminary approval of this, to take in some additional material so that the group can realize some additional revenue from the material. And the fact that the contractor is already mobilized there with his equipment and his personnel. And being as the PRP group and the town will be facing some long-term operation and maintenance costs associated with the site, even after the cap is installed, this money could be used to offset those future costs. GZA has performed a detailed cost-benefit analysis, and that analysis projects that over the course of 30 years, the PRP group is going to face a deficit in terms of paying for landfill operation and maintenance costs of about $830,000. And has projected that if the council can authorize the receipt of some additional material over the next two to four months, that would allow the height of the landfill to be extended by just five feet, that we could potentially take in enough revenue to completely offset the future long-term operation and maintenance costs associated with the landfill closure. So, you know, I want to reiterate that we are here today for a good reason. We have had a good performance at the landfill over the course of the last year. We are looking at closing and capping the landfill a year and a half to two years sooner than we had initially projected. We have more revenue than we expected when we started the project, and we have enough revenue now to pay for the effort through capping. So this is really an effort to say, we have an opportunity here to grab some additional revenue with really little upfront sunken costs. We've really sunk all those costs, and this is looking to use what would otherwise have been idle time to bring in that material, raise the grade slightly, and have additional money in the bank, so to speak, to cover long, long-term operation and maintenance costs without having to eat into taxpayer funds for that. So that's my overview of this, Mr. Wazika. I don't know if there's anything you think I didn't cover.
Over the next three months, if we accept the material over the next three months and bring that height up, the maximum that we're looking at, which would be five feet, what is the estimated net revenue to the town that will go into that fund to cover that 30, minimum 30-year of O&M costs that the town will be 60% responsible for?
The net revenue to the whole PRP group is about $1.2 million, and as Joe said, you're about a 60% share of that.
That's correct. So we're also... We're looking at three months. This effect will not affect the capping operation that was planned for the summer slash fall if we stopped it down. So they're gonna... It's not going to delay the project. It's not going to push anything off. It's just going to mean an additional three months during the wintertime of accepting the same type of material that's been going in there right along. There's no change in the materials type that's been allowed by DEM, correct?
That's right. At this point, we're not proposing any changes other than to raise that flat spot at the top, which is about 12 acres, another five feet. It wouldn't delay the closing.
So the same type, the same type of material, same type of chemicals in it? The construction and demolition material is going to be at the same basic ratio that it is now. None of that changes. It just puts that cap up, up to a five additional feet, which was over there today. And it's all leveled off at the current height, and it would simply be going up past where it is right now.
That's correct. Right now, it's within about a foot of the finished grade.
Do you foresee any potential downside of doing this?
No, no real downside. You know, in our detailed cost-benefit analysis, I guess the biggest potential risk that the group and the town would face is if the flow of material was to stop short of getting that full five feet of material in. And what we have kind of done to guard against that is we proposed to bring it up in two-foot-thick lifts uniformly over that area. So if at some point, market conditions change... The market conditions are very good for the landfill right now, but if they change, and they have not been this good for the entire tenure of the project, we could close it anytime shy of that. So there's not going to be a requirement to go up the five feet. There's just going to be the ability to go up the five feet if the town were to pass it. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor, I know that you were part of the meeting the other night. Would you like to add anything to this proposal? I know that, again, we're not required to. If they don't get enough materials, we'll stop short, but we still win regardless, and we can only win if it goes up to five feet. But again, do you see any downsides on this proposal, or is it all a plus? Because I know that we want to finish the project. Again, it's my district. I've lived in the district for 40 years, so this would be good, as far as I'm concerned. And again, I understand that the mound there now will be reduced a little bit still when it's finished. I think I understood. I don't know if that's accurate, but even an additional five feet, how do we stand legally? Is that a good thing? I guess my question is. I know money is good.
It's a good thing in that it, as Mr. Farside pointed out, and I think he and the team have done a good job in their presentation of this. I think it's a good proposal. But as Mr. Farside pointed out, this is mostly to, hopefully, defray the projected costs over the next, I think it was 20 or 30 years.
30 years, right.
So with a minimal increase in the overall height of the landfill. So, no, there are no legal impediments to the town council doing this. It's tentatively approved by the DEM. If you look at the resolution, it has to be fully approved by DEM. If you go to page two, the last whereas, this resolution is contingent on full approval by DEM, along with a couple of other conditions, which, if they take place, we would, I think, ratify... I would recommend ratifying this at the next town council meeting if all of those contingencies fall into place, since this resolution is contingent. But no, there are no legal impediments to the town doing this.
Okay. Thank you. Our next meeting is November 13th, I believe, the Tuesday after Veterans Day. Legally, do you think this will all be in place by then, or will it possibly be continued on as far as officially? Did you say ratifying it? I think your term is...
The understanding I had, the understanding I had was that they're pretty hopeful that the contingencies will be met by the next meeting. If not, it'll be the meeting after that.
That's great.
But I think they were pretty optimistic about that. Am I right, Mr. Farside?
So yes, so one condition relates to finalization of terms with the contractor because this essentially requires a change order with him. It's more an additional time on the site. So we have given instructions to the lead council for the bigger PRP group to negotiate those terms with him that are consistent with the terms that he has for the material he's receiving now. And if we don't get terms that are consistent, then we will... I'll come back before you and suggest that we not ratify this. And then Ed Summerlee can talk to the DEM condition. Do we expect to get DEM full approval by the 13th, or do we expect to get some other signal from them?
Yeah, we actually met with DEM on site today. We discussed this with Chris Wuluziak, who's representative for DEM out there. He wasn't sure exactly what their path was going to be, what they would need to see from us in the town as far as that approval goes. And he was noncommittal on the timeframe. You know, I think two weeks is... Would be aggressive for them. We told him if we were green-lighted today by the council to go ahead with this, we'd stop preparing some of the documents we discussed on Monday. We could probably deliver those over the next two weeks. So they would have what they needed before the 13th, but likely not have it approved before then.
My understanding is they would not even go forward with the approval unless this gets done tonight.
That's true.
They're not going to start something unless we approve this tonight.
That's true.
This has been a project that's been going on since 2003, so this is 15 years in the making, and we're finally at the point of finalizing and finishing this off. And this is going to generate some substantial revenue with no cost to the town to help offset some of those costs that we don't usually get a chance to do.
We are at the summit. Pardon the pun.
No pun.
We are at the summit. Good results.
Again, I wasn't at the meeting Tuesday, but I know the three parties that will continue on after Thanksgiving were, and I just wondered if they had any questions right now at this time regarding this resolution before us.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. It's unfortunate with all the, you know, the comments in social media, with all the misleading information being put in social media. Instead of people finding the facts out... This is a win-win for the town. Instead of, you know, just driving people, getting people all upset, there's actually on social media portraying this as a bad thing, and this is actually a good thing for the town. So I really wish people would find the facts before posting it and driving people crazy. So it's a win-win for the town, and I certainly, you know, and for this, five feet is not even going to be noticeable. It's already a good-sized hill up there now, but when it's all done and complete, I happened to drive by this afternoon, and they're dressing it up, and they're cleaning it up. It's looking a lot better. So I don't think a town can lose on this.
Ms. Bacon?
Just a quick question, and I asked this the other night. We have no DEM complaints or EPA complaints or investigations pending. Everything is okay with?
No, we haven't received any DEM or EPA complaints, notices of violation. You know, we have had, I think the town has received a couple of complaints about dust and the condition of the roadway, and we try to respond to those immediately, as we discussed on Tuesday. You know, all of our sedimentation erosion control inspections within the boundaries of the site have shown that it's compliant, so...
And let me just add to that, to give some additional comfort. Nicole runs a twice-a-month construction site meeting that Mr. Wazika attends from time to time, and DEM attends almost all of those meetings. So we are in constant touch with the regulators about our progress at the landfill. They are aware of the day-to-day goings-on, and, you know, we've got a pretty good record with them over the last couple of years in terms of moving things along and doing things the way they would like.
And just one other quick question. The material shipping record and log, that will still, that'll still take place if this does, we take in the extra materials, that will still have to be required?
Yeah, the same material evaluation and approval process. It's part of what we call the Material Management Plan for the facility that was written by Alliance on behalf of the town and the group, approved by DEM. That would stay in place until the facility was not accepting any more material.
And I guess this is probably, I don't know if you can use for you. So this extra revenue that would be coming in, will that, where will that money be earmarked for that kind of project? And how does that just...
Pursuant to the joint defense agreement and that the town entered into with the other companies, the private parties, PRPs, and the federal consent decree, the money goes into an account that's managed by liaison council, the lawyers that are out front for the PRP group as a whole, of which we are a component. So we get an accounting from them periodically. When Mr. Waters was the town manager, he and I would review it. Mr. Wazika has copies of the most recent financials. They manage the financials pursuant to the group joint defense agreement for cost sharing. So mechanically, the money, when it comes in, it goes into an account that they manage, and then they handle payments out on the group's behalf to the contractor and to GZA, which acts as a consultant to the whole group. So at the end of the day, the money doesn't come into a town account, but at the end of the day, if as projected here, we wind up with a surplus of $400,000, it says $373,000, if at the end of the day that holds true, there would actually be a distribution to the parties in their shares of the account, and the town would hypothetically get 60% of that. But that wouldn't be until some point in time as the operation and maintenance costs have all been exhausted at the site. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Could I just ask you one more question on that? The O&M costs that we have, it could last up to 30 years, am I correct? So is the PRPs and the legal council that are taking care of this going to pay that fund? Will they keep a contingency fund together to keep paying that over the next 30 years before they distribute all the money? How does that work? Can you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so what typically happens is the PRP group stays together as it is now, and it's... Their activities during that period of time are really led by the engineer, and there's a lot less loyal work, and there's a lot less other overhead involved. And the fund is there, and they pay out, and they'll do periodic reports, but there's really not a reason for the parties to convene and do a lot of decision-making, because it's a lot of sampling and other surveying that's prescribed by DEM or, in some cases, EPA regulation. In this case, I'd have to go look at the joint defense agreement to see if we have to come to some new agreement just to cover how the O&M will actually work. But all the parties' expectations, from what I could tell, is that we'll move forward more or less as we have to this point in handling, with liaison council out front, handling the payment of the O&M costs, as opposed to dispersing funds back to the parties for them to then pay in assessments periodically. That would just cause an administrative headache that I usually, I typically don't see at other sites. Typically, at other sites I'm at, the O&M continues just the way the remediation occurred.
The material that's going on this to cover it is going to be like AstroTurf, a version of it. This site is a perfect site for solar. We've had several inquiries already about utilizing that site for solar energy development. So there could be additional revenue coming in from those activities that go on there. We've even had one company approach us about purchasing the site. So there are other options on this to generate. So this is, at this point, it shouldn't cost the town any additional money going forward on maintaining this and securing the site from this point forward, especially if we bring it up to the five feet that they're proposing.
My question would be, how soon could any other entities come in, like solar farms? Would it be five years, 10 years? I know there's a 30-year possible, you know, cost, but is it good to go in a few years, like two, three, four?
Yeah, actually, the way this has been built out, whether you, I guess, exercise the five-foot increase or not, the site will be available almost immediately after closure.
Oh, okay. That's great.
So, you know, if we close this in 2019 as planned, I think it'd be very realistic to be installing solar in 2020.
I was hoping that's the answer, but I figured I'd ask anyhow. Some of the complaints come in, and I think they've come to me, you know, dirt on the street, backups with the trucks, you know, it's District 4. And I've referred them to our town manager, and he's handled them. Again, what, every two weeks you have a meeting, and Kevin McGee, DPW? Yeah. All right, good. So I think...
We've actually got an agreement in place where our streetspeople will actually go over there, turn over there once or twice.
Yeah.
And they can back charge the construction company, and we're able to, if it's something that they're unable to keep up with because of an excessive amount that suddenly appears and would stop them, of course.
Okay. And again, I have to say, I know Mr. Hoover is long gone, but we hired him. I was on the council in '09. I'm sure he'd be pleased with the progression of this progress of the, you know, project. And I think it's all good, all good, all the way around. Hopefully, the press can take note of that, because, you know, again, I don't do Facebook. I've got other things to do. I don't know, outside of family pictures, I don't want to see Facebook, because, again, a lot of erroneous information gets put on, and I don't want to go there. But I'm satisfied. I'm satisfied with the presentation tonight, with the pre-meeting, with our counselor saying that the resolution is good, and it's a good thing. So unless there's any other questions, Mr. Labosnier, go ahead.
Not so much a question, but just a statement. First of all, I'd like to thank the team for a great job. I think that it wasn't too long ago where we had concerns that we weren't going to meet the time because we weren't able to get the materials. And now to get this news that we're a year and a half, you know, forward now, brought back, and able to add the additional materials to really alleviate the costs to the taxpayer is really great news to me. And I want to thank you for your diligence, and I wish you all the success in the negotiations, because we know that we have that one other little hill to climb, and hopefully, we're successful, because that'll be successful of everybody. So with that being said, I've done it all. Thank you.
Well, then, I'd like at this time to ask for a motion to approve the resolution that is before the council tonight.
And I will make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion made and second. Any further discussion? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess that's four zero. Very good. Thank you. And again, good luck as we continue on and charge towards 2019. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody have a great Veterans Day, and we'll see you the day after Veterans Day on Tuesday, November 13. on Tuesday, November 13th. And get out and vote. Get out and vote.